Good morning. If everyone would take their seats, we'll get started. Welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners, 9:00 AM Tuesday, November 4th, 2025, regular scheduled board meeting. We're going to begin our meeting with our invocation and pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Pastor Leonard Himes. If I could get everyone to please stand that's able.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Our Father, as we come together today for governing, I want to, Lord, ask you to, as we lift up our nation, those suffering through oppression and those doing without, Lord, there's so many needs. We're grateful for how you've blessed this great county and all that we're able to contribute, and pray you'd bless that effort continually. Now help us in this meeting that we would govern with purpose and look to you and the people that we govern. Bless this day, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. Have some items that I need to add to the agenda. First item is the fountain on the square resolution. Second is the city of Hampton's annexation. And third is the data center discussion only. Can I get a motion to approve those walk-on items?
Motion approved.
All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. First item on the agenda is proclamations and recognition. Veterans Day proclamation. Ms. Admiral Smith, if you would please come forward.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, and pillars of the community. Today, we're presenting this proclamation in honor of Veterans Day and the outstanding service of American Legion Post 516, whereas the United States of America has always depended on the courage, dedication, and sacrifice of those who answered the call to service in our armed forces and preserve the freedoms and security of our nation. And whereas Veterans Day is observed each year on November 11th to thank and honor all who have served in uniform and to acknowledge that all who wore the uniform have protected our nation's liberty and promoted the common good. And whereas in 2025, the national theme proclaimed by the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs and the Veterans Day National Committee is service to our nation, recognizing that service transcends branch, era, conflict, or role, and that all uniformed men and women share in one purpose and one mission. Whereas the citizens of Henry County, Georgia, recognize the immense contributions of our local veterans and their families, whose service has enriched our community, strengthened our liberties, and anchored our future. And whereas we believe it is proper and fitting to publicly express our gratitude and respect for those veterans living among us, as well as those fallen, missing, and enduring in their devotion to this nation. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Henry County Board of Commissioners, on behalf of Chair Carlotta Harrell, Vice Chair Neet Robinson, and Commissioners Johnny Wilson, Dee England III, Michael Price, and Kevin J. Lewis, does hereby proclaim November 11th, 2025, as Veterans Day in Henry County. On this meaningful occasion, the Board offers its sincere thanks to American Legion Post 516 and the Henry County Veterans Advisory Board for their tireless service and engagement, which uplift our residents and embody the spirit of unity and pride that make Henry County, Georgia, and our nation a place of honor and hope. This fourth day of November, 2025. Thank you.
Okay, awesome. And I know that we have representatives from both organizations that are here. If we could get Post 516, their commander, to please come forward. We'll take a picture here to the side, and then we'll get a picture with the Veterans Advisory Board after our picture with Post 516.
What are you supposed to wear? What are you wearing today?
No.
We didn't get the memo.
Okay, so next item on the agenda is employees' years of service and recognition holly.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Board, pillars of the community. Thank you for allowing us to present this month's Years of Service Awards to some of our very dedicated county employees. I've got today with me Ms. Catherine Cersei that's going to help with the presentations. We have a brief video.
On behalf of Henry County, we would like to recognize employees who are celebrating years of service with the county. Those being recognized celebrate their work anniversary in November for their five, 10, or 20 years with Henry County. We ask that these employees being recognized come forward when their name is called to receive their certificate and ask them to remain in the front for a group photo with the Board. We ask the audience to hold your applause until all employees from each group have been announced. We have a number of employees throughout the county in various departments who are celebrating five years of service in November 2025. These employees include Adalina Reynolds with magistrate court, Alexandra Newsom with the sheriff's office, Brandy Hench with E911, Carlton Jefferson with the sheriff's office, Daniel Potsey-Adley with the sheriff's office, Devin Iwansky with the Henry County Police Department, John Harrison with the tax assessor's office, Martha Burnett with the sheriff's office, and Parker Spurlock with Parks and Recreation. Today, we recognize two employees celebrating 10 years of service in November of 2025. They are Raymond La Duke with the Henry County Police Department and Shane Mosley with Parks and Recreation. Today, we celebrate one employee who has served Henry County for 20 years. Ms. Deborah Day started with Henry County in November of 2005 as a court records clerk one. Her career has grown, as the county has, and now she serves as a supervisor with probate court. With immense gratitude, Henry County extends a heartfelt thank you for your unwavering dedication and exceptional contributions. Thank you, Chair and Board, for this time at today's meeting.
Thank you, Chair and Board.
Thank you. Congratulations to all of our employees. Thank you for the work that you do for the county each day. So we have some presentations. Going to have the airport master plan update. Cooper Carey consultant here to do that.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, and pillars of the Henry County community. I'm Kamal Waslam, the Deputy Director of Planning and Zoning. And today with me, I have Ms. Allison Bickers, who is our lead consultant with Cooper Carey, and they're doing the airport district master plan, which will be folded into our Unified Land Development Code rewrite coming up in the first quarter of 2026. Ms. Allison is here to share you how we've gotten to this point in the process, what we've concepted for the master plan, as well as what the next steps are. So without further ado, Ms. Allison Bickers. Thank you.
Thank you, Kamal.
Kamal, thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and members of my colleagues, including Trevor Thompson, who cannot be here today. We're glad to present this update on the airport district master plan. With months and months of collaboration with staff, the airport executive director, Echo Park Speedway, the Development Authority, Georgia Power, and many other stakeholders, we developed a concept after listening to what the desires were of Henry County for this district, a concept that envisions blending entertainment, living, recreation, and light industrial across 3,000 acres that spans from just south of the planned Grove development south to the county line and the Hampton City limits. And we did that in thinking about creating zones that allowed for a sense of retreat, a sense of gathering, and a sense of entertainment, all blended. Oh, thank you. Perfect. Thank you. So here you can see the study area of the master plan. So again, just to the north is the lake that, to the north of that lake is the approved Grove development, and then you can see the AMS Airport and Echo Speedway. So here's the concept that does attempts to do many things, but first and foremost, it attempts to reflect the community of Henry County in preserving what makes this area special, which is a really beautiful natural environment, but yet with the opportunity to capture entertainment uses with Echo Park Speedway and the airport and the activity that is going on there. I would also like to say this was done with careful, carefully and thoughtfully with the planned airport master plan for the airport and its growth. On our team, we had Michael Baker, who led that effort for the airport, and so we really have worked closely, carefully with them to make sure that this plan does not, does not impede the future development of the airport, but works with the plans for the growth of the airport. So here's, you can see it from an aerial view. So you see to, on the bottom of your screen where the "2" is located, that's an entertainment district. Considering what it could look like should there be bigger entertainment uses allowed, this is preferably the location of an entertainment district where you could have retail, maybe some living, but a lot of retail and entertainment. You can think of not necessarily Topgolf, but something like that, to take advantage of the activity at Echo, Echo Park. To the north of that, you see it transitions to more residential. You see up there, just under the number one, we also incorporated the plan for the little development that's, that's already been approved as well, building interconnectivity, thinking about then transitioning in Zone 5 to lower density living, thinking about how that looks along with sports tourism. And then in the far northwest, more low-impact, potentially recreation uses. It could be clamping, it could be some other type of recreation activity there. And then you see in there, in where the number four is, the opportunity to develop something like data centers without compromising the vision of the plan to remain really respecting the natural environment. So the first element that we're going to talk about in detail is to look at where, and you can see the airport just to the south, this is what it would look like. And we talked a lot with the Development Authority and with Georgia Power about developing a site plan for this that could show data centers in this study area. And part of what we have been really looking at, and I know Kamal's going to expand on this later in the meeting, is thinking about not only how these data centers can look inviting instead of just a huge gray box and blend in with the natural environment, but also can be more sustainable than they have traditionally been in the past. So here's a view of the entry drive to this part. And as you can see, the buildings can sort of be buried back into the topography with trees and trails really dominating people's view. Part of the discussion has also been creating a network, a trail system network that really moves north and south and allows people who say if you're in the entertainment district and you wanted to ride your bike to the northern portion of this district, you could do so safely and very comfortably on a network of trails and streets that are alternative to Highway 41. The very northern portion of this woodland, what we call a woodland oasis, and you can see this is about 1,000 acres, can include to the far right of your screen, sports tourism park, a small amount of retail on Highway 41, transitioning to a low-density, single-family neighborhood, much like, think about Lake Sfivey or even some portions of the edges of Serenby or Trilith, and then recreation, clamping, camping, and the like on the far left. And here you can see a view of what it might look like near that sports tourism location. Again, a consistent theme is the ability to move around in ways other than just your car, but also enabling easily vehicular movement and safe, putting pedestrians and recreation on equal footing with automobiles. Here's what that single-family neighborhood can look like. And then moving south to the gathering. So we call this the gathering. It's predominantly townhome and single-family residential. What you see here at the front is, along 41, it remains rather wooded, and that is to enable the growth of the airport. That's within the landing zone. It's not a safe place to put residential. But that also makes for a very nice place to put stormwater management as an amenity. So the other part of this that we're really writing into the code is to think more holistically about stormwater management and incorporating in as something that can be experienced in a positive way rather than fenced off and is at the back of all the development. So that's what you see at the front, and allowing townhomes and residential to really have that stormwater as an amenity rather than a barrier. One, one note here, I think we were able to really collaborate with the plan development that's already been approved that sits between that northern portion, which is a little bit of retail and an expansion of a sports, sports park. And to the south, they really worked with us and wanted to build connections between the two properties, which is really wonderful for both your residence and future development. So here you can see, thinking about what stormwater can look like in this area as a public park for all the residents and visitors to this district. This is located just to the, off the end of the runway of the airport. And then finally, the entertainment destination. One of, with a lot of collaboration with Echo Park and the airport and with the staff of Henry County, we really understood the opportunity here to create something that captures more of the economic opportunity that there is with Echo Park, but also the future expansion of the airport as well, and trying to capture something that brings something really special to the south side and creates some of the momentum that you see taking place in other parts of the metro area like Truus Park. But we wanted to think about this in a way that reflected Henry County. And so this is the plan here for the entertainment district. And again, this is working with and understanding what the future needs and desires are of Echo Park potentially to participate on their land in this entertainment district. And a huge component of that entertainment district is to be able to walk around, park once, and stay and linger. You're either, you could be coming for a race or an event at Echo Park, but you're equally as likely to come here on a non-race day or event day at Echo Park and stay and walk around and enjoy shops and enjoy entertainment opportunities with your family. So here's what that can look like. And so here's what it looks again like in an aerial view. I think one of the biggest elements that we want to reinforce here is that this is creating a lot of opportunity here within the envisioned density while also creating enough concentration of entertainment uses all the way out to recreation uses that remain connected in ways that are not dependent on Highway 41, that retain the natural beauty of the district while also trying to capture and really enliven the areas where there's already a lot of activity going on and capture that more as a place for people to stay in Henry County instead of having to go other, to other parts of the metro Atlanta to experience this type of development, this type of entertainment, and also draw people from outside of Henry County to this area, so that when people from all over the state come to Echo Park, they have a place to stay and spend their money. And our next steps, now that we have this concept, we're, you know, we are transitioning into writing the architectural design guidelines that will then also roll into the code rewrites that are also being done. So this is all, we're working hand-in-hand with TSW, who's working on that project, to make sure that this is incorporated seamlessly and with, with that effort as well. Any questions?
Oh, any questions from the Board? Commissioner Angler?
So just real briefly, a timeline of how you would see this unfold through the years?
Yeah, I think that some of that, obviously, we had a market analysis done as part of this project, and so we incorporated that into what we thought was the right land use mix throughout the district that would work as the market evolves. But I think some of the things that will have to happen is you're obviously working with different private landowners who have different timelines of when they would like to develop their property. So what this is, is a vision for you all to help you guide decisions as those parcels that are privately held. that are privately held come in, and it's something for you to help guide them and for staff to help guide them towards where you all want to be as a county. The other thing is, is that this is also a tool to help sell the vision to them so that they are more likely to move more quickly. Now there are, obviously, you have Echo Park Speedway, which is probably, you know, they have the wherewithal potentially to do something sooner maybe than some others. It's really up to the private sector. What this is, is to be able to guide that development in the direction in which you want to go over time and as the market evolves. It also gives your Development Authority a plan that they can use, and they've worked with us, they've been wonderful to work with, so that as they go to attract and economic development goes to attract users to Henry County, they know where they can put that type of, you know, whether it's clamping, data center, entertainment, there's now a place to say, hey, we have this, this is ready to go, this plan has been approved, we have guidelines for this. This is going to be a much easier approval process.
And also, I want to say thank you to Commissioner Lewis, I know this falls within his district. We have been, as a board, very supportive of master plans in general in all of the districts, and that is us working together so folks can actually see what we're expecting as we're moving forward in the future, what that looks like, and that it does have a lot more constraints on it as we are moving forward. So, thank you to y'all for helping put the master plan together. Thank you for, Commissioner Lewis, for spearheading this. Thank you.
Yeah, good morning, Allison. I just want to say, it has been a true pleasure working with you all. This is something I've been wanting to do since I became a commissioner, just to make sure that we put a roadmap in place for what development looks like. I know we, all of us as commissioners, we get, you know, we get directed from constituents saying that they want us to plan, you know, say, hey, plan, we want infrastructure, you need to do, put your infrastructure in before you actually build. So this is what this is. This is literally us planning, putting a roadmap in place so that developers, when they come, they know exactly what the county wants. What I love about this, the concept so far, is that the preservation of a lot of the green space. So we're actually looking ahead to probably preserve at least 50% of the trees and green space going forward. So I know Commissioner Anglin asked, you know, the timeline, so you're looking at a, you know, 20 to 30-year roadmap, you know, of what development's going to look like. And so with that, another thing that we get from our constituency is, okay, did you check with the school board, did you check with Georgia Power, like all of these different entities, and they are aware of this too. This will actually give them a roadmap. I was speaking with Mackenzie McDaniel, who's our school board representative for District Five just the other day, and we were talking about, you know, plan growth for the school systems, what they need to do. This helps them plan as well. This is how we should do it. This is going to be huge for Henry County, and I know, you know, part of my vision was that, you know, if you want to leave Henry County to do something, that's fine, but you don't have to. You can be able to do whatever it is you want, whether that's going camping, going to a nice restaurant, you can do all of that within the confines of Henry County. So that is our goal, and I just appreciate the work you've done so far.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
Yes, and thank you to the staff, they've done a wonderful job shepherding us through this.
Absolutely.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is transportation splot update. District One, Clayton Cart.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, and pillars of the Henry County community. This morning, the Splot Department would like to share with you some updates out of Commission District One for our transportation splot program. This will be a new set of updates that the Splot Department is starting. We will touch on each district once per month, so for the other districts, your updates will follow in future meetings. First, some high-level information for the audience and those that may be watching online. Henry County voters approved our transportation splot program in 2021, and collections began in 2022. The five-year program lasts through 2027 and is projected to collect $245 million over those five years, from which the county shares about $165 million. Henry County designated those funds for seven major road projects throughout the county, and $9.75 million was set aside for road resurfacing. Commission District One represents our most southern communities, Locust Grove, Hampton, and Ola in southern Henry County. And out of those seven major projects, District One includes or is immediately adjacent to two of those seven projects, those being the Bill Gardner Parkway widening and State Route 81 widening Phase One. I'll touch more on each of those projects. First, the Bill Gardner Parkway widening extends between the interstate in Locust Grove to State Route 155, and will widen the existing two-lane roadway to four lanes with a center median, as well as construct an eight-foot-wide shared-use path on both sides of the road to improve bicycle and pedestrian mobility. Right now, the Splot Department is about 70% complete with right-of-way acquisition, and we are anticipating, estimating that this project will start construction next summer, summer of 2026. Along the bottom there are just a couple photos showing the existing conditions of the existing two-lane roadway. Next, on the State Route 81 project, this project extends from Postmaster Drive in McDonough to North Bethany Road at Bethany Baptist Church, and will similarly widen the existing two-lane road to four lanes with a center median and pedestrian sidewalks and a shared-use path. Right-of-way acquisition on this project is 100% complete, and in collaboration with our partners at Georgia DOT, the state is planning to let this project for construction in January, meaning we, the motorists and residents, should start to see construction about spring 2026. And again, there are some photos of the existing conditions along State Route 81. Within T-Splot, we also had funding for road resurfacing, and specific to District One, that funding was utilized for three roadways, Peaksville Road, Stroud Road, and Southola Road back in 2022 as part of a project that the board approved at that time. Here you can see in orange, those three roadways we resurfaced as they relate to the larger district. For residents who want to know more about our splot program, they can visit our website, henrycountysplot.com, and there they can see updates on all of our various splot projects going on throughout the county. Thank you for your time this morning, Board, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Any questions from the board?
I don't have any questions, but thank you for the update. I know we're excited about getting the Bill Gardner Parkway project started. Well, we in process of buying the right-of-way, like you said, but it's going to be, it's going to be important to the Locust Grove community to be able to move traffic through that area. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Next item on the agenda is public safety update.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners, and pillars of the Henry County community. I have the pleasure today of introducing our Public Safety Director and Police Chief, Mike Ireland, but first I want to tell you why we're here and how we got here. We were recently reviewing some of the budgetary trends over the last few years, looking at projections, and we came across the increases for public safety in Henry County. And we thought it was important to come to you today to show you what has happened over the past five years for public safety and to say thank you. Thank you to this board, thank you to this community for continuously supporting public safety and making sure that our ladies and gentlemen in the field, on the road, have what they need to be successful to protect Henry County. I'm going to ask Chief Ireland to come up and provide a presentation.
Yes, good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and pillars of the community. I tell you, it is my pleasure to stand here before you as not only your Chief of Police, but also your Public Safety Director. I have an amazing team that, on a day-to-day basis, that provide the service in Henry County, and I just want to make sure that they're all acknowledged, so if they can all come on up here with me. Yes, thank you. Yeah, we want to take a few minutes just to express our sincere gratitude for your continued commitment and support to our public safety team. Your dedication has ensured our team has the essential equipment and personnel needed to fulfill our mission in protecting life and property. First thing we're going to do is, we're going to show you a video, and then we're going to do a brief PowerPoint, so. Thank you.
In Henry County, public safety isn't just a priority, it's a promise. Over the past five years, Henry County government has made historic investments to protect and serve our growing community. From the Henry County Police Department to fire rescue, E-911, emergency management, and community resources, every agency has seen bold improvements in personnel, equipment, and infrastructure. To keep pace with population growth and rising demand, the Henry County Police Department has expanded its force, added new patrol units, and upgraded technology to enhance community policing. Year after year, they have seen a significant increase in authorized personnel. Investments in modern vehicles and digital tools have improved response times and officer safety, ensuring our neighborhoods stay secure. In 2020, the county opened the Real-Time Crime Center, which is a network of cameras throughout the county that tracks active response calls and allows for advanced detection, rapid communication, and efficient response. Additionally, between August 2022 and January 2023, Commissioners approved the purchase of 175 new police vehicles totaling $8.4 million. That investment was in addition to the $2.6 million for police vehicles purchased in 2021. Henry County also opened the North Precinct at Highway 42 and Eagle's Landing. The building was purchased in 2022, and the precinct was open in November of 2023 using Splot funds of $2.2 million. The Fairview Watch Office, located at Fairview Road and Panola Road, opened in January 2022, a $4 million Splot investment. Henry County Fire Rescue has received over $38.4 million in new fire engines and lifesaving apparatus. Made to handle the toughest emergencies, these state-of-the-art vehicles include 19 fire trucks, six ladder trucks, six new ambulances, four remounts, and two heavy rescue vehicles. In addition to the new apparatus and vehicles, the fiscal year 2026 budget includes 20 new positions for staffing at future fire station number 18, to be located at 107 Harold Drive. Having greater fire coverage not only saves lives, but also saves on insurance premiums for homeowners due to better ISO readings. With additional staffing and upgraded equipment, our fire teams are more prepared than ever to protect lives and property. Our E-911 communications is second to none. Behind every emergency call is a team of skilled dispatchers. Henry County's E-911 system has been modernized with advanced software and training to ensure rapid, accurate coordination. E-911 employees also benefited from a competent class study, bringing salaries up to industry standards. Henry County also approved $2.6 million in August 2023 for design services for the new E-911 and Emergency Operations Center. These upgrades mean faster help when it matters most. Henry County's Emergency Management Agency and Homeland Security has strengthened its disaster readiness, investing in mobile command units, emergency shelters, and community alert systems. In May 2022, the Board of Commissioners approved $2.7 million for two mobile command vehicles. Whether it's a storm, fire, or public health crisis, our EMA is ready to respond. In addition to personnel, apparatus, and capital investments, earlier this year, after a classification and compensation study, the starting salary for certified police officers was raised from $44,884 to $54,557 in order to attract and retain the best and brightest. Public safety goes beyond sirens and uniforms. Henry County has expanded community programs, from youth outreach to mental health support, creating safer or resilient neighborhoods. These investments build trust, reduce crime, and uplift every corner of our community. Henry County's commitment to public safety is stronger than ever. With smart investments and dedicated teams, we're building a safer future together.
Thank you for your support. Over the last five years, we can definitely see the growth within Henry County public safety, and so I thank you. Also, really want to thank my staff behind me because without them, none of this would be possible, so thank you guys, appreciate it. Now, we're just going to do a little quick run-through with this PowerPoint, and it's just highlight our objective in certain things in reference, to highlight Henry County investment in public safety over the past five years, demonstrate the county continuing commitment to strengthen and central services, enhancing community safety, supporting the personnel and infrastructure that protects our community every day. It's also showcase key accomplishment ranging from new facilities, equipment, and personnel development, and technologies upgrades, most of that you've seen in the video. Now, as you can tell, throughout the last five years, there have been significant growth, not only growth to a general fund and special service district, but you can also tell that there has been significant growth within the Fire Department and the Police Department. This is caused by personnel issue, equipment, and all those things that we just saw in the video. And as we know, our public safety is about half of the total general fund and special service budget, so we know we're a little bit over 50%. And then you can see the breakdown for fiscal year 2026 in reference to fire, police, the sheriff, EMS, and emergency management, and Homeland Security. But overall, the public safety represent about 50.3% of that county budget. These are just some of the items. I want to make it clear that these are not all of the items that were purchased, or you guys made possible for Henry County Police Department to have, but these are essentially those items that we placed on the review board in reference to the Bearcat, the Ford Explorers, the Fairview Watch Office, and of course, the North Precinct, and of course, the Six Harley Davis Motorcycle, which I know the chair enjoyed those, so, thank you, ma'am, I do appreciate you guys for that.
I didn't see my traffic vehicles on here.
Yes, there have been, there have been definitely more items that were actually purchased, but we're limited to the number of items that we can post it. I mean, we can go on for sometimes in reference, especially with the Police Department, for tasers, body cam, all those items were actually purchased during this last five years, so thank you. Then we go to the Fire Department, and these are required equipment. One of the big thing was state- One of the big thing was Station 6, and of course, as you know, there has been several fire trucks and ambulance that have been purchased over the last five years. As a matter of fact, I think November 7th, we have a push-in.
That's correct.
At Station?
16.
Station 16 at 9 o'clock, so we invite everyone to come out to see that. That is the progress that Henry County has made when we have items or things like that that's actually occurring. We have mobile command vehicles, the 911 command vehicles, we have ladder trucks, this was in 2022, 2023 ladder trucks, heavy rescue, ambulances, two tankers, four custom engines, four stock engines and four remount ambulances. And then of course, we had 20 additional personnel that was added on to the Fire Department, and I think in 2025, we have an additional 20 individuals that were added on, so we are definitely making progress. Our Emergency Management and Homeland Security, as you can tell, there has been an increase in that, but not only have there been an increase in that, but as you can tell, we have been having some serious weather issue in the past few years, and I want to say the team has been doing an amazing job with that. They have handled all the disasters that we had that came through that affected our community and our citizens. These are some of the items or some of the things that the Emergency Management System and Homeland Security handled during that time, which is, which like I said, has been, they have been doing an amazing job. The Community Resource, this was a department that was recently formed, and I just want to say this, if any of us was out last Friday, this was the department that put this all together, and I just want to give Ms. Amanda Reeves a round of applause for amazing job. When I tell you she coordinate, she was on the phone, she was like a salesperson. She did an amazing job with that, but also with her doing an amazing job, the staff, the Commissioners, the citizen, everyone that came out and helped in this time of need was an amazing service. And so, I thank you Amanda for that, and I thank the citizen, and I thank the Commissioners and special thanks to the County Manager and her staff for seeing this vision and rolling it out, and I believe it's been a big success so far. As a matter of fact, we're going to roll it out again on November 21st, we're going to be at JP Mosley, so that's just a plug for you JP. Our E-911 Communication Highlights, I mean, what can you say about our 911 center? They have been truly amazing, averaging over 376,000 calls per year, averaging 16, over 16,000 total training hours. And of course, we all know they've been Georgia E-911 Dispatch Center of the Year. That is truly an accomplishment when you look at all the other 911 center throughout the state of Georgia. That has been definitely accomplishment. Just for emergency purposes, because of what we talked about earlier in reference to storms and those things that coming into the county, we have established a backup 911 center and that is at Henry County Police Department. E-911 Communication Officer deployed to assist in North Carolina back in 2024, they did Helena and Lee County, and in Florida, they did Hurricane EM. Exceeding the NENA standard 90% for call answer times, this 911 center is one of the few 911 center that you can call and somebody don't say please hold. So, that is amazing accomplishment. Assisted Rockdale in their 911 onsite, just recently when they had the bio lab fire, we were there assisting them. And of course, we have put in over 319 community engagement event in the last four years. That is seriously an accomplishment. Henry County Commitment to Public Safety, by dedicating more than half of the general fund and special service district budget to public safety, the county continues to prioritize the well-being of its residents and its visitors and by ensuring rapid emergency response, maintaining law enforcement readiness and support in fire and emergency service. I want, I say again, none of this would be possible, of course, without your commitment to public safety and also to the amazing leadership of the men and women that stands behind me, so I thank you. And I'll take any questions if you have them.
Any questions from the Board, Johnny?
I have a comment, no questions. First of all, Chief, I'm going to say this on behalf of the Board, public safety is our top priority. And I want to thank you and your staff and all the men and women that show up every day to make a positive difference in our county.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Robinson.
I just want to say again, thank you all so much for what you do every day. Citizens need to know that you're just not behind a desk, you're doing amazing work. And as my colleague said, you are our priority when it comes to funding positions and departments. I do want to give a shout-out, and I call her the Angel of Henry County. Amanda is amazing. I can call her when the citizens call me, whether it be educators, just anybody that's homeless, she's always making it a priority and she helps people, okay? It comes from the heart, and I just want to say that we have a jewel on the team, and we definitely appreciate you with that. And even just you all, when we just fed the community, everyone was all in. Top, it didn't matter what your status was, everybody was all in for Henry County, and you guys are just greatly appreciated. I do want to throw in a plug, because you know me, I'm on the north end of the county. I would love, and I know we're going to JP Mosley, but I want us to go a little further north, because we do have several schools, and I get a lot of calls, and Amanda knows this from that area. And I know if we're saying the conditions or just the ability to have the area to put this on since it is such a major impact, I would love to see if we can partner with our school systems, so that way we do have the Performing Arts Center there, so we do have space that we can actually host an event, but I just would like to see a lot more on the north end, because we do have a lot of families, older structures, young children moving in to be able to support them, and Amanda knows this, and again, from the bottom of my heart, I appreciate you Amanda. Thank you ma'am.
Thank you, seems us all short on the gratitude and appreciation that we have in District 3. Thank y'all to all of your staff that has stayed the years through some difficult times here that y'all have gone through as far as budget constraints and stuff, but we are, once again, as Commissioner Wilson said, we are committed to making sure we get this correct moving forward, and that's from the whole Board. So, thank you to all of y'all, and thank you to the ones that have been here a long time and stayed here as we have had to endure some of these changes, so thank you.
First, I just want to say, I just want to be like Chief Island when I grow up. I tell him that all the time, like he actually got an introduction from the Deputy County Manager, I'm like, I don't think I've seen anybody get an introduction. I just had to throw that in there, Chief, so I was like messing with him, but just as our Board has said, we have shown, you know, a lot of times people like to talk and talk, but I think as a Board, we have shown that we're about action and we have put the money behind the words and making sure we take care of our public safety department, because you take care of all of us, you know, I think you're the backbone of the county. And just like I was telling some of our fire recruits the other day, I said, you know, you help citizens every day of the week, it's not always just about responding to a fire or responding to an emergency, like actually making sure that people's souls are fed, you know, that's, to me, that was such an moment, I was so proud the other day, you know, because I think that was just epitome of what we are as a county, epitome of what we are as a community, and we are Henry County family, so I just want to thank all of you for what you do every day, it is truly appreciated, so.
I too would like to thank you all for the amazing job that you do while we are at home sleeping, safe and sound, you were patrolling the streets, making sure everything is good for us, and so we just thank you for the collective effort for each of you and each of the divisions or departments, just to again, make sure that we live in a safe community. But I must also give a special shout-out to Ms. Amanda. My church often will occasionally go out to feed the homeless, and meeting some of them, some of those individuals have her phone number, because to her, it seems to me that it's not just a job, it truly is a ministry. And we just went out a couple of weeks ago, and we provided food for those who were living in the woods as well as those who live in hotels. The amazing thing that she did for us was she provided some care packets that we were able to give to those persons, deodorant, toothpaste, toothbrushes, and we don't have a very large church, and we do what we can, but she helped us to be able to help those who were in need, and so again, we appreciate you and thank you for all the hard work that you do for the community.
I guess I'm last but not least, huh? The only thing Chief, that was, that I didn't see in the slide was my picture as the Public You know, I'm proud of you all, I'm proud of what you do every day. I was one of you all, Lieutenant with Henry County Police Department, and you know, you all will always have a special place in my heart, and I appreciate everything that each agency does under our public safety. You know, some of the other things that I think a lot of the times that the public don't really, that they're not really aware of, is the community involvement and the community policing that takes place in our community, with our Police Athletically, with the Explorers Program, with all the different community events that you all take part in and participate in, you know, setting up tables, making sure that information is given out and shared with the public, you all do an amazing job in just, you know, just community overall, and I really appreciate you all always stepping up to the plate. I'm going to tell you, those fire and police recruits that were out on Friday were amazing, and you know, just having, just seeing their work ethics and them really caring and wanting to give back to the community, so that was really special for me. And you know, as we continue to grow, I hope in all of these different master plans and everything that we're doing, that we're always looking at expansion for police and fire, so we can make sure that our community remains protected and covered. So, thank you all, I really appreciate you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And I really appreciate Hutch, he's the best. Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda, if we could have our County Manager, the police come forward and read our consent agenda items.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair and members of the Board. It is extremely hard to go after public safety, because you all have publicly said that they are by far your most favorite department, so for the other departments, the County Manager loves you, and thank you for your service.
Good morning. No, 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 I gave Hutch a shot.
Yeah, but Commissioner Wilson started with, "Public safety is our favorite department", like, we got it on recording, sir, so we'll talk about it later, okay, it's okay. But no, good morning, good morning, good morning, this is your consent agenda for Tuesday, November 4th, 2025 at 9:00 a.m. As a reminder, this is Election Day and the polls are open until 7:00 p.m. this evening, so if you haven't had an opportunity to go and vote, please make sure that you do that. The first item on the consent agenda is under Capital Projects. It is a resolution approving the proposal from Building Envelope Management to renovate the roof of the Judicial Annex in the amount of $192,159.40 utilizing Capital Improvement Plan Bond Funds. We also have a resolution approving the proposal from Comtech to run fiber to the Judicial Annex and Aquatic Center in the amount of $410,140.40 utilizing our Capital Improvement Plan CIP Bond Funds. We have a resolution approving a contract with Roof Connect National Roofing Services for a new membrane roof at Fire Station Number 3, located at 3030 State Route 42, Stop Bridge, Georgia, in the amount of $209,235 from Omni Partners Contract utilizing Capital Improvement Plan CIP Bond Funds located in District 4. Under the County Attorney, we have a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the City of McDonough regarding county jail property. We also have a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the City of McDonough regarding the old golf course property. Under Courts, Superior Court, we have a resolution adopting the locality pay in the amount of $20,106 to comply with House Bill 85 regarding the Superior Court Judicial Compensation Reform. Under E-911, we have a resolution authorizing approval of the annual reoccurring broadband data purchase through Loudon Communications for LTE Systems on public safety radios at a cost of $112,596 utilizing the E-911 repairs and maintenance account. Under Human Resources, we have a resolution approving the Medicare Advantage renewals for 2026 for retirees post-65. Under SPOS, we have a resolution approving the purchase of technology storage hardware in the amount of $284,182.60 via the Georgia State Contract utilizing our SPOS 6 Funds, SP 6009. We also have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 2,603.76 square feet of right-of-way, more or less, in Landline 205 of the 2nd District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract for condemnation pursuant to provision of OCGA Section 32-3-4 through Section 32-3-19 for the Bill Gardner Parkway Parcel 13 T-SPOS Project located in District 1. We have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 673.38 square feet of right-of-way and 270.91 square feet of temporary easement, more or less, in Landline 235 of the 2nd District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to provision of OCGA Section 32-3-4 through Section 32-3-19, Bill Gardner Parkway Parcel 7, T-SPOS Project located in District 1. We have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 1,675 square feet of right-of-way, more or less, in Landline 204 of the 2nd District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to provision of OCGA Section 32-3-4 through Section 32-3-19, Bill Gardner Parkway Parcel 53, T-SPOS Project located in District 1. The final resolution is to authorize the acquisition of 1,790 square feet of right-of-way, 9,200.64 square feet of permanent easement, 415.05 square feet of temporary easement and 3,601.82 square feet of driveway easement, more or less, in Landline 109 of the 6th District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation. or condemnation pursuant to provision of OCGA Section 32-3-4 through 32-3-19, Jonesboro Road Widening Project, Parcel Number 42, T-SPOSS Project located in District Five. Madam Chair, this ends the consent agenda.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? If not.
Just a comment.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Billings, I need that final 6% on Jonesboro Road, sir.
Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Got a motion and a second. No further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Move to the regular agenda. First item on the agenda is gonna be where we added the fountain on the square resolution. Lynn, you gonna be presenting that?
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners and members of the Henry County community. I have before you a resolution approving a contract with prime contractors for the construction of a new fountain located at the McDonough Square in the amount of $441,527.50 utilizing Capital Improvement Plan Bond Funds. Uh, staff has consulted with Gordian, who is the facilitator, facilitator of the Sourcewell EZIQC, contract number GA ST02040820-PCI, and prime contractors to develop the scope of work for a new 20-foot by 20-foot three-tier fountain. The fountain will be located at the center of the McDonough Square. The project will be completed per work order number 143032 dated November 3rd of 2025, again, in the amount of $441,527.50. The scope of services includes the fountain, the fountain stone, pavers, electrical work, plumbing, landscaping, uh, the conceptual drawing, as it was detailed in the scope of work. Uh, this exciting addition will contribute to the ongoing beautification of the McDonough Square, enhancing its charm and creating a welcoming gathering space for residents and visitors to enjoy. Capital Improvement Plan Bond Funds will be used to support this project. This is an example of what the fountain will look like. Um, it will be this shape. It will have a stone base versus, uh, this shows a stucco base. The stone will hold up, uh, much longer than a stucco base. It will have a granite seat wall. The overall height of the fountain, the proposed fountain, is 11 foot six inches. Uh, the bottom bowl of the fountain is nine foot wa- um, in diameter. The middle bowl is five foot diameter and the upper bowl is two foot 10 inches in diameter. And I, uh, will give a little background as far as prime contractors, the contractor, they have been in business since 1979. Uh, they are contracted through Gordian and Gordian, uh, uses, uh, state contract, which means the DOAS has already done the bidding process for these contractors. The costs for each of the items they bill for are already been bid and, and established on a set rate. And the subcontractor that is doing the fountain has also been in business since 1993 and they have experience doing both pools, fountains. They, uh, actually did the City of Roswell Square Fountain. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the board?
I don't have any questions. I got a couple of comments. I think last year, the Commissioner of District Three mentioned something about a fountain. Um, then I read about this on social media last week. And then we had this walk-on item today. I think something like this. I, I think all the commissioners need to be involved in this type of, um, structure. So, and I wasn't, I don't know about the other commissioners. I, I didn't get notification that we was in the process of putting this item together. So, those are my comments.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I kinda echo what my District One Commissioner has stated. I do know that I do have some concerns, um, because if we're talking about using capital funding, um, for improvements, it was a concern even for me, knowing that even in my district, that I have intersection improvements, major that needs to be done. Um, and we're talking in the Fairview area, um, and also wanting to do, um, intergovernmental agreements, um, with our cities. Uh, because to me, we need to, and I guess just bringing up when, um, I was doing something with the City of Stockbridge, when it came to Bridge Fest, doing something for the community overall, um, for the citizens. I just wanna make sure we're being fiscally responsible in what we're doing. I know McDonough is the geranium city, um, and just putting this amount of funding in a fountain really sends out a message. Um, when I know even in our jails, um, there's improvements that are needed. I even have mold, um, at the Fairview Library, you know, um, that they've been complaining about. So there's some improvements that are needed everywhere. And for me to be able to say or to make it make sense for 400 and some thousand dollars, um, for a fountain, it's something that I just can't see at this time. Um, like I said, this just came before us, uh, for as a dollar amount. Um, and I just know with this fountain, I mean, to me, the funding could be used more so fiscally responsible in other areas because I've been asking on and on for improvement support, but now we're walking on a $400,000 plus fountain. Um, and so I yield for now, but I do have some more additional comments, um, for later. So that's okay, Madam Chair.
Okay, uh, go ahead and get your comments out the way now so that we can.
Okay, well, I'll leave it at that. I think I was very clear on what I said. So I'll leave it at that.
All right, okay. Uh, Commissioner Lewis?
No, I, I know we had discussions about the fountain. I don't know, I know that was a priority for, uh, Commissioner Anglin. Um, so, so no issue, uh, there. And I, I do think it would be, um, definitely add to the beautification of the McDonough Square. My, my only, uh, issue is that we, we made an announcement about the fountain before it was brought to the board, I guess, to, to know how much it costs. You know, I, I think that's kinda backwards. I think we should discuss that first before we make an announcement to the general public. So, um, that, that is my comment.
Okay.
I too, um, I am for beautification, but when I saw the amount, I was kinda taken aback. Um, and I was just wondering, um, I know we went through the Source Well, I think, uh, bidding process, but did we have an idea of what another contractor could do it for? Um, and just how, you know, it was settled for the most part on this particular, you know, if it was a lower bid, what were the other bids that came in, uh, to have a comparison? Um, and last night, I was kinda looking through the bid process and I had some questions that possibly would be better answered from the contractor. Uh, just some of the prices of some of the things that were listed seemed to be, um, out of whack, if, if I could use that term. Uh, because I did look up some of the parts that were listed and, uh, some of those, their itemized amounts were so much more than for other companies that I looked that provided the same type of materials. So that was a concern for me. Um, and the number of skid steers that were on, um, you know, I was just wondering why were so many needed, um, to, and that was added to the bottom line of the cost of those types of things. Um, I did have, uh, some questions about, uh, because it's only a 20 by 20. And being a skid steer operator, you know, if it's a 20 by 20, you know, if you got three skid steers, they're gonna be on top of each other in that area. So I, I was wondering, you know, what would be the need for that many for that, um, size area. So those are just some of my, you know, concerns. Again, do, um, like beautification, but you know, as my colleague stated, we have to be fiscally responsible, you know, with taxpayers' funds and we need to make sure that we are, you know, doing beautification, but doing it in a feasible way or manner. So those are my comments.
Okay. Commissioner Anglin, this is, um, in your district.
Yes, sir. I have some comments. Um, I think it's important to understand how we got here. July of 2020, the statue was removed from the McDonough Square after the Board of Commissioners voted to have it removed. Only one person on this current board served at that time and he unfortunately was not present at that meeting. It then went to the judge, who is no so, no longer serving in Henry County, to go ahead and sign that court order. From there, the statue was removed. So that's how we are here today. And folks talk about the statue. They talk about heritage. They talk about roots. And I would challenge folks that no family is more rooted in Henry County than my family. My family received our land through the Henry County Landlot Release after serving in the Revolutionary War. I have family that also did serve during the Civil War, and they are buried now at Fellowship Presbyterian in Jackson, Georgia. I grew up just blocks away from the McDonough Square, spending days biking to the square to go get ice cream, rent movies when we had a rental movie place on the square through the eighties and nineties. So the square was a place where we could go and enjoy the local community and see our friends. Folks ask about the statue and the statue is currently in a pod carefully packed securely and safely. And we are working to convey that back to where the statue needs to go. I think folks need to understand that it is safely stored. There's a lot of conversation around that. I was also there, unlike a lot of folks, the night of July 28th, the night the statue was removed. I will say it was hurtful. It was painful to see the change. It was a difficult situation for the community in general. But over the past four years, where the statue has stood, it is now a pile of rocks. We as Henry Countyans, we as a community, new and old, deserve better than a pile of rocks on our county seat. Our children, our grandchildren, and every future generation to come should not have to bear looking at that scar for the rest of their life when we could have corrected it. So folks ask, why a fountain? Water represents healing and new beginning spiritually. What I have learned about Henry Countyans, once again, new and old, is that there's a lot of passion and love in this community on both sides of the issue with the statue. And no matter where you find yourself concerning the statue, we as a community need healing. Healing is not without pain and healing takes time. I've learned that from my father, who happens to be a physician. I remind the folks here that District Three did make this a top priority as far as budgeting through the bu- budget hearing process. And District Three has supported each of y'all's top priorities in that cost. We have worked diligently with the McDonough Main Street community. We have worked diligently with McDonough merchants, spearheaded by Lindsay Strickland, on working to get that plan done. We've also worked well with our McDonough City Council and we had a meeting that was set up to meet with the McDonough Mayor. Scott Reeves has been instrumental in helping guide this. This was a commitment that we made as Henry Countyans to the Si- City of McDonough over two years ago, when the city revealed the garden plans for the square. I want District Three to know that I am committed to our district priorities and making sure that our county seat is no longer a pile of rocks. With that, I make a motion that we move forward with the fountain.
I have a motion.
I'll say it.
We got a second. No other discussion? All in favor? Those that oppose?
And I would like to abstain because I just don't have enough information, uh, for me to make my vote.
County Clerk?
I have the, would you like to? Can, does he need to give a reason for it?
That motion carries?
Motion carries. Yes. 3, 2, 1.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Next item is T-SPOSS Resolution for the Henry County Water Authority Utility Relocation. Commissioner Wilson, did you need to make a comment?
I don't get that.
Okay, I think it was shared in his comments that you were, you were not present during the 2020 meeting.
Don't remember what, sir.
Yeah, you were in the hospital.
Correct. I'd like to make a comment. Commissioner Anglin said I wasn't present in that 2020 meeting, July 7th. I was hospitalized, so I wasn't able to attend. So that was a walk-on item without, without notice. So I just wanted to let everyone know when I wasn't, why I was not at that 2020, July 7th meeting, so.
And I know you weren't here because you was in the hospital with COVID. And that was during the time.
Yes, with COVID, yes, sir.
Just one comment. Sorry if it came across that way. I, I knew you were gone in the hospital. I just didn't want to. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board and members of the community. The T-SPOSS item being presented to you this morning is for the request of the relocation for Henry County Water Authority.
of the project, Mill Road widening from Peachtree Pettlers to Jonesboro Road. And at this time, I'll take any questions that you have.
Is this Phase One of the Mill Road widening?
Yes, it's Phase One, the T-Spots section from Jonesboro Road to Peachtree Pettlers. Phase Two is going to go from Peachtree Pettlers down to State Route 81, and it's currently in design.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you. Any questions from the Board on this here? Commissioner Lewis, this is...
No, I don't have any questions. Just thank you. Like I said, once again, this is another call in the infrastructure improvements that we're doing in District Five, and this is just a piece that is necessary for us to start the widening. They already have put the barrels out on Mill Road, so that citizens are aware that we're about to start widening. And it took a while to get it right away, but we are ready. So with that being said, I move to approve.
Okay. Got a motion?
Second.
A motion and a second. No discussion. All in favor. Motion carries.
The next T-Spots agenda item is to request approval to relocate Georgia Power Utilities for the Rock Quarry Road widening project. Due to the construction of Rock Quarry Road, Georgia Power must relocate a portion of their facilities. Georgia Power previously submitted a cost estimate, and the Board approved that estimate via Resolution 24-210 in August of 2024. Georgia Power has since submitted a revised cost estimate in the amount of $5,720,41, reflecting an increase in an estimated cost of $131,854.
Funding for the Georgia Power relocation is available in the T-Spots account. Staff recommends to rescind the previous Resolution 24-10 and approve the revised utility relocation cost estimate. This slide provides an overview of the general location of the project from Eagles Landing Parkway to North Henry Boulevard. And at this time, I will take any questions that you have. So yes, I do have some questions. So from the time the original resolution was approved, you're telling me that cost increased over $100,000?
Yes, that's what the cost estimate is reflecting now, almost a year later. They're saying that the cost to do the relocation's materials and engineering has gone up, and they're requesting that we pay the increase to get the relocation done.
Okay. Okay, so, okay, I just want to be clear. So do we need to resc... County Manager, do we need to rescind the Resolution 24-210 first, and then approve the new resolution second, or do we do it?
I believe you can do it all in one motion.
All in one motion? Okay.
Make a motion to rescind the 24-210 and approve the new relocation.
Which is what? Resolution what?
The clerk is going to assign the number.
What is the resolution? Do we have a number yet?
Not yet.
Okay. So I need a motion then to rescind Resolution 24-210 for the Georgia Power relocation estimate cost and approve a revised cost in the amount of $5,720,41 for the Rock Quarry Road widening.
Second?
Okay, I made a motion. Got a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor. Motion carries. Thank you, Bert.
Thank you, Chair.
Next item on the agenda, planning and zoning. Did I leave something off that I was supposed to add?
So Madam Chair, there are two items that we amended the agenda at the beginning of the meeting to add. One is an annexation request from the City of Hampton, and then the data center ordinance discussion. So we just need to know where you would like those items.
Okay, so let's do this here first. Let's go ahead and do the A and B. Let's get that out of the way.
Okay. So staff, we're going to do the two items that are published on the agenda, and then the add items we will do immediately following.
Good morning.
Okay, we can do... You got the annexation. Let's do the annexation. Put it up there.
Madam Clerk, did you hear? She's switching it.
Okay, I'm switching it. I mean, you had on your...
That's mine right there.
Okay, keep going. Just go to the next one. No, we're not... Is this the amendment?
This is the amendment, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The discussion.
Okay, let's do this.
Okay, all right. Okay. Good morning again, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners and Pillars of the Community. At the September 23rd Board Meeting, Commissioner Price requests that the staff bring this item forward for discussion. The standards related to animal tethering are currently outlined in Chapter 3-4, Public Safety Section 3-4-9 on Lawful Acts, specifically Subsections 11 and 12 of the Henry County Code of Ordinances. In 2021, the ordinance was amended by Animal Care and Control to include provisions on tethering. Today's discussion centers on the proposal to remove those tethering provisions and revert to the pre-2021 version of that ordinance, which did not address tethering. To help guide this conversation, I'm joined by Captain Hobgood, Director of Animal Care and Patrol, who will provide additional context and insight on this ordinance.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the Board and pillars of our community. I'm Captain Michael Hobgood. I serve as your Director for Animal Care and Control. I'm here today to speak on this proposed change to our animal code. The proposed change is to remove the provision in our animal code that allows for specific exemptions to the tethering exemption. My staff and I are opposed to this change as written. There are specific reasons that we're opposed to the striking of the tethering exemptions in our animal code. First of these is the immediate and direct impact it will have on a great many of our citizens in our county. Those affected most would be citizens who live in developments with strict fencing or architectural restrictions, not permitted to keep their dogs indoors, are on low or fixed incomes, are disabled or visually impaired, on working, herding, or hunting dogs, or have dogs that are escape risks. Under the proposed changes, these citizens and others could face penalties or even face confiscation of their beloved pets despite being responsible pet owners. Secondly, the proposed changes would put an incredible burden on our already strained manpower at Animal Care and Control. We remain at or near the maximum capacity of animals most days in the past two years. Enforcement with this change will cause more euthanasia, which we have worked hard to lower. This increased workload only slightly overshadows the need for manpower should this change occur. This proposal will require officers and staff to respond to many more numerous complaints, first to educate citizens, as we do with most of our calls, and then to issue citations for violations of the newly changed code section. Some citizens, as we experience daily, will decide to abandon their ownership and release their animals into the community. This will cause harm to the animals, jeopardize public safety, and necessitate officer response to collect these animals. Once these animals make it to the shelter, my staff will have to care for all of those animals. Another aspect that must be considered is the burden on the courts to handle all these additional cases that will inevitably make it into their hands. The courts and the solicitor general will need to have input into the enforcement of this change and how it will affect their workload. In addition to the courts, the cities will have to adapt their animal codes to reflect change, as some of them do not directly reference our own. If not, this will dictate a larger deviation from one neighbor to the next based on city limits. An item that could be considered in lieu of striking the entire code is to allow only a trolley system. A trolley system is a section of the provision that is in place already. This lone exemption would provide an alternate to tethering, a humane alternate, and hope that those who can afford it are not allowed fencing. This definitive allowance is shared by all of our neighboring counties to include Clayton, DeKalb, Fayette, Gwinnett, and Spaulding Counties. In conclusion, we believe that eliminating the tethering provision in its entirety would have significant negative consequences for Henry County residents and would substantially increase the demand for enforcement, education, and sheltering resources for our animals. By contrast, amending the ordinance to allow for a trolley system alone would provide for a humane outcome with far less disruption and hardship on our citizens in our country, our county. Thank you in consideration for our input on this very important issue.
So Captain Hobgood, let me ask the question.
Yes, ma'am.
What are your... What is your department's recommendation?
Our department's recommendation is that we believe as a staff, when looking at what would happen if we took out the entire tethering, as it stated in 12, that that would have undue consequences on a lot of our residents that aren't allowed to do anything but tethering to take their animals outdoors.
Okay. And so your recommendation is to keep all components of it?
To either keep all components of it or to strike out the codes with limiting it only to the trolley system. That's what all the other counties around us have done.
Okay. So still keep it, but limit it to the trolley system?
Yes, ma'am. The only exemption would be a trolley system, yes, ma'am.
All right. I just want to make sure that I understood what you all's position was, because at the end of the day, nobody's going out with you guys.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that.
And just a point of reference, I think Captain Hobgood is referring to D, E, and F. There may be another one, but right off the top, I can see D, E, and F. It contains the trolley system.
So is there an option for... to allow for a certain number of hours? So like as opposed to all day, is there a possibility for relief in being... the animal being chained?
Yes, ma'am. The code can be written however y'all see fit. So you could restrict it to certain hours, that they can only be on a tether for a certain number of hours or during certain hours of the day?
Just curious.
Yes, ma'am.
Was just wondering. So our neighboring counties are just using the trolley system, is what you're saying?
That's their only exemption to tethering, yes, ma'am, is to allow for a trolley system.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Price, you asked for this.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your presentation and sharing with us. I just wanted to give a little backstory. So this was brought to my attention by one of the committed citizens here in the county who's actually here today with us. And upon reading the resolution, there was some contradictions in it. So that's how I think all of this came about, because it basically states that there is no tethering. But even when we think of a trolley system, that is still a form of tethering. So that was the contradiction that I saw in the ordinance. A lot of what was stated, and again, thank you for your presentation, are really speculations. We're speculating that if we do do away with these provisions, that certain things will happen. We don't really know if it is going to happen or not. We're just speculating that people will, you know, get rid of their animals. Also, when I look at the ordinances, because I'm an animal lover, it seems as if we are more concerned about the owners as opposed to the pets. And I think if we're writing ordinances for not tethering, that the animals should be first and foremost. We should protect them and not really write an ordinance for the benefit of, you know, the pet owner, if you will. One of the things that the Bible teaches us is that we have to count up the cost, and animals are an expense. And for those who have them, they must know that there is an expense to them. Back in 2013, I used to have horses. So I had to get rid of five of my horses because my finances had changed. So I was able to place them in a place where they would be properly cared for and taken care of. And so when we look at these owners that have these pets, I know we say there are some people that can't afford anything but tethering. Then we have to consider, are they able, or should they have gotten the pet in the first place? That's how I view it. I am a strong, stark animal lover, and I think that whenever we do ordinances, we need to make certain that these ordinances are created with the animals in mind first, and then, secondly, you know, the owners of those pets. And the issue again, in the way that it is currently written in the ordinance, is that even a trolley system is still tethering, because it talks about tethering is being connected to something that is stationary, and that trolley is still connected to something stationary, whether it's trees or whatever the case may be, two poles. So it's still tethering even on a trolley system. So I think there's some major contradictions in the resolutions. And I would like for us to have more concern for the animals and not necessarily just for the animal owner, because again, you know, there is an expense to having on animals. When I got mine, you know, I had to do some things to make certain that they were taken care of. I had to take that in consideration. When we go on vacation, we have to get air flights, we have to get hotels, we also have to get borders. So it's a part of it. And I just want us, and I know that we are in discussion only today, but I do want us, if we can, to plan on taking some action in December. So I want to get with staff, see if we can just try to work, see if we can figure out a good resolution, not just for the pet owner, but for the pets. Because, you know, they have feelings, you know, and to have something tied around your neck 24/7 is not really a good look, you know. And I want us to be able to really consider, you know, not just the finances or the ability of the pet owner, but also, you know, the care and concern of those animals, you know. And I don't want us to be hung on speculations, you know, that this may happen and that may happen. I do believe that our pets must be first and foremost, and we have to do what's best for them in our ordinances.
Okay. So this is discussion only, and I would recommend that the two of y'all get together and bring something back before the Board in December.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay? We're going to move on to the next item on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, and Pillars of the Henry County Community. The item before you is for property located at 585 Scarborough Road. The request before you is to appeal the zoning advisory board denial of a personal care home request here at this property, as decided on September 11th of this year. Subject property shown here on the exhibit map and in your books. Currently zoned R2, single-family residence, and is located within the Twin Pines subdivision. Conditional use application CU 2411 was made by the applicant for use of a personal care home at the subject property, more specifically a non-home occupation personal care home. Personal care homes are limited, rather permitted, in all residential zoning districts with an approved conditional use and limited to the six clients. Services include, but are not limited to, individual assistance with supervision or self-administered medication, essential activities of daily living such as eating, bathing, grooming... Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, and Pillars of the Henry County Community. The item before you is for property located at 585 Scarborough Road. The request before you is to appeal the zoning advisory board denial of a personal care home request here at this property as decided on September eleventh of this year. Subject property shown here on the exhibit map and in your books. Currently zoned R2, single-family residence, and is located within the Twin Pines subdivision. Conditional use application CU 2411 was made by the applicant for use of a personal care home at the subject property, more specifically a non-home occupation personal care home. Personal care homes are limited, rather permitted, in all residential zoning districts with an approved conditional use and limited to these six clients. Services include, but are not limited to, individual assistance with supervision or self-administered medication, essential activities of daily living such as eating, bathing, grooming, dressing, and toileting. Personal care homes would, regardless of the number of clients, would be required to install a sprinkler system in the home to meet fire and life safety code. On September eleventh of this year, planning and zoning staff presented and submitted a staff report to the zoning advisory board with a recommendation of approval with conditions for that personal care home. At that meeting, the zoning advisory board denied the request. An appeal application was submitted on September thirtieth regarding the denial of the conditional use request in meeting the submitted deadline for appeal applications. Staff does recommend that the zoning advisory board complete the appeal process by overturning the zoning advisory board's denial and approval of the conditional use request for the purpose of that personal care home with the conditions presented on the screen and in your exhibit books. Conditions would require a fence and sprinkler system. Condition six there states that the approval of this request would not transfer between owners, it would be restricted to the applicant and the owner of the property as it is today. During this process, there was some discussion internally regarding a possible generator condition in coordination with, and rather in discussions with the fire department and the building department. Staff is in agreeance that that, any sort of condition regarding a generator would be an extensive hardship. It would require a retrofitting of the home, it would require extensive electrical work. With all that, ultimately, staff found it to be that hardship. So we have omitted that condition, possible condition, I should say, from our recommendation. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Go back to the other page of recommendations of the things. So I didn't see anything that addressed parking and I didn't see anything that, so when you talk about the, the generator, so basically staff is not recommending it because it's a hardship on...
It'd be an extensive hardship for any and all personal care homes in the county. Any single-family home, which personal care homes are permitted.
So what happens if the power go out? If we have a storm and the power goes out and you have somebody that's on a machine that requires electricity?
If the owner of the personal care home has a fire...
Where's the, come on, Chief Black.
Good morning, Chair. Could you repeat that one more time, please?
So what happens if the, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out if you have six individuals in a space and the power goes out, then what?
Granted, there is a likelihood of that taking place. The concern that the fire has, as well as we have discussions with P&amp;Z and the building department, is requiring the retrofitting, electrical permits, wiring, as well as alternative fuel sources on property. The property in question, the personal care home, has been rendered safe per fire code because it does have a sprinkler system. The requirement for a generator is something that would be permitted through the building department, but we have shared our concerns as far as properly retrofitting, proper installation, and also storing of an alternative fuel source on property. And again, this is a residential structure, this is not a commercial structure, residential area.
But we have to, it's licensed by the state, it is, it is commercial. You have to be licensed by the state, you have to get a business license from the county, so it is a business. So at the end of the day, I mean, I'm just trying to see if, you know, my question is just as so, I understand the sprinkler component of it, but, you know, you are talking about people's lives, so if, if my machines start working, then what? I just want to know.
Yeah.
This is a commercial business.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Board, and Pillars of the Community. The, the cost to retrofit these homes could range from anywhere from eight to thirty thousand dollars. There's not enough alternative fuel to fuel the generator in a subdivision that has basically all electrical, so there's another cost with, with adding that on top of the generator costs. These homes are fitted with an alarm system straight to the fire department, so their emergency response, that would be a way of them contacting, you know, mess with an alarm system.
Nobody answered my question, y'all dancing around it. At the end of the day, when the power goes out, what is the plan?
That would really be a responsibility of the owner.
Are we moving the patients? What are we doing?
That would be the responsibility of the...
Nobody's, nobody's answering the question.
But that would be the responsibility of the owner of the business.
Okay, alright, thank you. Alright, this is a public hearing. Those wishing to come and speak in favor, please come forward.
Good morning, Michelle Battle with Battle Law, thirty-five sixty-two, Haverisham at Northlake, Tucker, Georgia, three zero zero eight four. I am here representing the Pacific Health Group with regards to this application. This is the property that's in question at 585 Scarborough Road. And I find it very interesting, as we call it a business, but for the people who live here, this is their home. And we'll talk about why this is their home and why it is necessary. The property is point five-three acres of land. It has ample area for both parking and the turnaround, as we can see on the site plan. Additionally, there is a rather large backyard that is currently undeveloped. This proposed personal care home would be used for four adult residents with intellectual and developmental disabilities licensed through the state's Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities. And the purpose is to provide a safe, supportive residence with twenty-four to seven, twenty-four seven supervision and personal care services for those adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities who cannot live alone. And for me, this is, quite honestly, a very personal project as well as I am the co-chair and chairperson of A Place for Bethany, which is an organization that was formed a couple of years ago to support those individuals, those adults who have developmental disabilities. I actually have a couple of my employees who have children that are now adults, who have aged out of the school population and are now at home with their parents, but we know that they can't stay with their parents forever. And at some point, when their parents are no longer able to care for them, they have to have a place where they can go as well and be a part of community and live and not be institutionalized because we have not provided for adequate places for them to be able to stay. So for these individuals, this is not a business, this is the place that they will be calling home potentially for the rest of their lives. And they have a right to live within community as anyone else has a right to live within the community. It is not their fault that they have to have additional assistance in the home in order for them to be a part of community and not ostracized to the, to the outskirts of community, but to be integrated into community and treated as a part of community. The population to be served and those, when we're looking at the Georgia Behavioral and Division typically is oriented towards those with autism, cerebral palsy, epilepsy, other impairments of intellectual and adaptive functioning. A lot of times, we also see individuals who may have Down Syndrome or other intellectual and disability type issues living within these spaces. In June of nineteen ninety-nine, there was a case involving the state of Georgia, Olmsted versus LC, in which two women who had been mentally ill and had developmental disabilities were voluntarily admitted into a psychiatric unit in a state-run Georgia regional hospital. And after those women had completed their treatment, unfortunately, they had nowhere else to go. They kept them institutionalized because the state, I guess, believed that there was no other place to put them. And so in June of nineteen ninety-nine, the U.S. Supreme Court indicated that unjustified segregation of persons with disabilities constitutes discrimination and violation of Title Two of the Americans with Disability Act. And in that holding, the court reflected that first institutional placement of persons who can handle and benefit from community settings perpetuates unwarranted assumptions that persons so isolated are incapable of or unworthy of participating in community life. And that is certainly not what I know Henry County would be saying to those who are living within this county that need additional assistance in their living space. No different than you may have a child, or you may have a cousin, or aunt, or uncle, or even a parent who may have some type of intellectual disability. We never know when that may happen. I have an employee whose brother unfortunately was in a car accident and it resulted in him having intellectual disabilities where he lived with his parents at home until he passed. Everyone is not that blessed and some of us need another place to be able to call home that entitles us to stay within community. These are some of the faces of the people who were served by that Homestead Act, including Doug, who we see up here where he was now allowed to be within a group home that not only provided his medical needs, but also allowed him to thrive and be a part of community. So we see that there are many individuals who benefited from this type of a ruling and who we are simply trying to make sure have a place to live that is within community, again, not on the outskirts of community. Staff has recommended approval of this application. The property is zoned R2. It is a personal care home, which would be permissible if there were a person that were actually living in the space. If this was someone's home and they were also having individuals live in the home with them, we wouldn't even be in this moment. But because this home will be dedicated to four individuals, mind you, there is already a waiting list for this home because there are not a lot of these homes that actually take people that come under that particular division. It's not just a regular personal care home for anyone, but specifically for those who have these intellectual or behavioral disabilities. And so what we are seeking is a home that is actually more specialized than what we normally would typically see. Meeting the conditional use standards, we believe that this use for these homes is functionally indistinguishable from any other family residence and will not negatively alter the neighborhood, the character of the neighborhood. There is a recognized need in Henry County and Georgia for safe, regulated housing for developmentally disabled adults, which is what the DBHDD program, the state program supports. There will be minimal increase in any type of traffic, primarily staff shift changes and occasional visitors. We're talking about at least one to two staff members always being on site during the twenty-four hour period. So the individuals that would be living within this space typically would not be those who would drive. They would receive assistance with being able to get to and from if they have a job because many of them may have employment that they are going to. This is not a space in which the assumption is everyone that's in here is in some way non-ambulatory. The people that would live in this space could in fact be going to work during the day, coming home, but they cannot live by themselves. They need a space where they will be able to live with others to have careful oversight of them. Also, noise activity levels will be consistent with any other standard home and the lot size in existing home is more than sufficient to meet all of the state and local requirements. Benefit to the community is that it promotes the integration of developmentally disabled citizens into the community as intended by state and federal policies, as we saw in the case presented. It also provides a stable, supervised, and caring home environment for vulnerable adults. The home will generate property taxes and employment, employee qualified local staff. And Pacific Health Systems is committed to maintaining this property in high standards and being responsive to any neighborhood concerns. When asked about what happens if the lights go out, the same thing that happens in any other home, if the lights go out, they will have to report that to whatever the sources as it providing that power. In most instances, if it's, say, an oxygen tank or something like that that they may have on, they typically are taking provision for having that backup because we know that could happen in anybody's home, whether you are living alone or whether you are living in a family setting. There are always ways to mitigate against that without having to impose upon them the sum for putting in a generator. You have to remember that the monies that are coming into this home, they are being federally funded through monies that the individual who is coming into that space is given through the federal government. We also know that there has been a lot of impact right now on the special needs community period because the federal government has seen, has made the determination that, I guess, a lot of special needs folks don't need school and other things of that nature, which has resulted in many of their benefits being retracted. And in some instances, things such as being able to do video medical conferences and things of that nature being cut out. And so that puts more pressure on those who are caring for these individuals to try and make up the gap. So there's not a ton of money there that can be utilized to support these types of additional requirements if a generator were to be required for the site.
Your time is over.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Anyone wishing to come and speak in opposition, please come forward. Please state your name.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board, and Staff. First of all, I want to thank you all for the service that you provide to Henry County. My name is Mildred Schmelz. I live at one seven zero Dink Scott Court in Ellenwood, Georgia. My commissioner is the Honorable Neet Robinson. I have been a resident and taxpayer of Henry County for the past thirty-two years. My husband and I bought two acres and built our home here in Henry County because of the county atmosphere, the country atmosphere, the school system, and the closeness to downtown Atlanta. I come to you as a citizen and taxpayer who's spoken in opposition to this proposed personal care home numerous times. Let me be clear, I'm not opposed to transitional housing, but I am opposed to northern Henry County, specifically unincorporated northern Henry County, being rezoned to accommodate personal care homes and group homes for the entire county. This applicant has been denied twice by the Henry County Planning and Zoning Board. He lives in Hampton, Georgia, but is placing his personal care home in northern Henry County. Why? He is appealing the decision of the zoning board in dismissing wishes of the homeowners. None of the homeowner owners are discriminating but feel that we as homeowners are being discriminated against. Why is northern Henry County the only area in Henry County where there is an influx of rezoning to accommodate personal care homes and group homes? There is another personal care home less than a mile from the requested rezoning by the applicant. I love Henry County and I want only the best for Henry County. Commissioners, please do the right thing and deny this request. Once again, I do thank you for your service and there are other people here from the area. A lot of people couldn't get off because they're working today, but I would like for those people who are here to stand who are in opposition. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Vice Chair and the Board of Commissioners for hearing our opposition. As Ms. Mildred has just said, we've been before the zoning advisory board... As Ms. Mildred has just said, we've been before the zoning advisory board two times, for sure, that it's been denied. The first time we came, the applicant had, he wasn't clear on what the building, what kind of clientele he was going to be servicing. He told us he was going to be servicing, it was going to be adult males, he didn't have an age range, or he wasn't clear. Okay, so then he came back again in September, he told us in September that it was going to be a senior care facility. Now we come today, and Attorney Battles is telling us that it's going to be a home for the disabled, people with disabilities. The community, we don't know what's going to be in the house. Once the, once you guys give permission for them to move forward, who is going to oversee what it really is? She said that it's a two-story house, it's a ranch house that's been converted, the garage has been converted to some room. The layout of it, when we came to the board meeting in September, he didn't have a layout of what it was going to be. In May, one of the community members said she saw on the drawing that there was a room that he was alleging was a 10-foot, 10-foot room, and we even tried to figure out, okay, well, a twin bed would be typically 36 to 39 inches wide and 75 inches long. How would you accommodate, you know, two beds in that room? And now we come before, they're coming before us, saying that it's going to be for disabled people, it almost sounds like it's going to be limited supervision. Now you're saying it's going to be people potentially there that go back and forth and have jobs. I mean, we really don't know what's going to be in that community, and in that house. And once you guys give them permission to have this house, we have, who's going to come by and check to make sure that it's in compliance? Who's going to be these adult men, because she said ages of the people are 22? I mean, who is going to be overseeing? There's no set in place that somebody is going to be there 24/7. She said there may be one or two people there. I mean, there's just so many variables that are not clear on how that house is going to be maintained. There are families who live in that neighborhood who have children, there are, there are all kinds of people in that neighborhood. I'm not opposed to anything. I came here today prepared to oppose a senior care home without the proper, proper things in place for it. Now, today, we come here and find out, we're talking about disableds. Where is the owner? He was not able to articulate clearly what he was doing to start with. He told us in the board meeting, he told the zoning board meeting, that he acquired the house for that purpose. I went and looked at the tax records, and he, he quit, the, quit deeded the property from some, his agent, to him, I guess, in preparation to make it whatever this is. It's not a community, it's not building the community, it's not generating this economic catalyst that he said, and I am clearly not opposed to any kind of disability. I'm all for somebody, I'm all for taking care of the disabled, and people are underserved. I have no problem with that. But right now, it just, it sounds integrous. The integrity of it is questionable. You know, one minute you're this, one minute you're that. Now you come in, you have an attorney who is appealing and coming in with all of the language now, when this language should have been in place when he came back to the board in May, and then when he came back again in, in September. So now, I'm, we're all over the place with this, this house. And this house is definitely not a two-story house. I live in that neighborhood, I pass there every day. The sign for this appeal meeting was up, I had to call twice and tell them that the sign was down. Somebody said, well, it may have been accidentally knocked down. I don't know if it was that or that, it just didn't, they didn't want this open to the community. They alleged that last time that there were only two people opposed in the meeting when we came in May. One of the community members then, she had people to stand to represent how many people were opposed to this. So again, it's just all over the place, and it just, it just doesn't feel good. If you came with some kind of order, and you came with a real plan, if this is what you were going to do from the beginning, then that's what you should have laid out, May, September. Now you come here today at the last minute, at the last decision-making board, and now you, you got all the things in place. That is not right, it doesn't feel good to the, the community members there. It makes us feel like we don't have any kind of control over anything, we just have to go with whatever people do. And I don't think that's right, and I don't appreciate it. And I, I hope that you guys will at least consider what we're saying. I don't care if he goes back through the whole process again, he still needs to operate with somewhat, some, it doesn't feel integrous, that's all I'm going to say about that. So thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Are you speaking in opposition?
Oh, no, I'm speaking out of.
Okay, well, if you're not speaking in opposition, no, ma'am, you cannot speak. Anyone else speaking in opposition? Okay, public hearing is over. Commissioner Robinson, this is your district, I'll let you take the lead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair has actually added some of the questions and the concerns that I had earlier, so I won't repeat those. I do want to say to the citizens that have come out, thank you for allowing your voices to be heard. I've said time again what we're trying to do with the Fairview community, what the desires are, the community, and that's what we're trying to move forward with. It was certain things stated, and I just want to bring it, because I have personal experience, when it comes to the disabilities. My aunt, ever since I was a little girl, my dad has taken care of her, even though the funding has come from the state, but she lives in a disability community. It's not in a residential area. They have their own independence apartment style, so they can work, as you mentioned, but just having someone in a residential area is kind of, I guess, I can say, careful with my words, let me, I'm just going to give an example. My father just recently was in a personal care home in the Ellwood area. So when you talk about it's not a business, it is a business, because I actually had to pay $3,100 for a little room monthly, okay? So it is a business when it comes to that, but being in a small space, they're not truly getting the quality of care that they really need, okay? And also, you know, they offer different things, but it's not feasible to someone that really wants to have true quality of life, and I just want to put that there. So again, I do agree with the Chair, when it is, it is a business, because that is, that is the, what I had to actually have to pay, put in my monthly, to ensure that, and I continue to have to do that elsewhere. But when you're saying disability, they need the space, because when, they're not going to be confined to the home all the time. And when they have disabilities, they want to feel a part of the community. But then you may have them, when they're wanting to be a part of the community, some of the community that's there are not aware that they are there, right? And, and not, and knowing how to interact with them, right? So I just want to say, Ms. Battle, I, you know, we haven't had an opportunity to sit with you, to be able to explain what the vision, I've kind of spoken it from here, and, but I will make the time to move forward, because I have town halls with my constituents, and I will say, and my commissioners, my colleagues know, Fairview shows up, they are really concerned and involved with their community. And I just want to make sure that being on the northern end, there is some quite, you know, things that they, a lot of things they don't receive. It's more so like, let's dump it there, and we want to not have that to be a dumping ground, and it's not going to be a dumping ground for certain things. If we're going to do, we're going to do quality growth in that area. So with me, I, hopefully what I'm saying now, it tells you I'm not for this, right? Kenta and staff, you guys know that, I'm against any of the homes that are there that are in residential areas. And hopefully, moving forward as a county, like I said, where my aunt was at, is in a disability facility in Anderson, South Carolina, that we can mirror that type of development for these constituents, so they can have the quality of life that they truly deserve. Because most people, even with your private home, have rental home as well, right? And I can turn that into anything. But at the same time, what is the vision for that entire community? What is the vision that we're wanting for their quality of life, for those that would be staying there? So I hope I've covered to say I'm not against anyone with disabilities. I'm not against anyone that has aged out and need the quality of care. As a matter of fact, it's called long-term hospice, right? You're not saying you're leaving today, but those homes are there for that as well, even for our youth, to be able to bring them back to, you know, being, you know, upstanding citizens in our community. Never against that, never against that, and I want that to be clear. It's also that what I'm speaking, it's only what I'm speaking on is quality growth, making sure that we are putting things in areas where they need to be, and not just putting them, because we feel that that's a great location, when it's not. So that's my comment.
So I need a motion to deny.
I move to deny this request.
Got a motion, is there a second? A second. All in favor? Motion carries. The appeal is denied. Next item on the agenda is the City of Hampton's annexation.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, and pillars of the Henry County community. Item before you is for our annexation request submitted by the City of Hampton for property on Wynn Drive at the intersection with Fears Drive, for a total of 60.16 plus or minus acres. Current zoning is split between RA, residential agricultural, and PD, plant development, with a future land use map designation of low-density suburban, supporting up to two dwelling units per acre net. As per the application materials, City of Hampton proposes to annex the subject properties using the 100% method, from the current zoning classification of RA and PD to the City of Hampton equivalent, with no change in zoning or future land use map designation. A portion of the subject property, that property, that portion zoned PD, east of Wynn Drive, was part of a larger rezoning request, known as Henderson Farms, from RA to PD. That request was approved with conditions in August of 2009, I'm sorry, 2009, with subsequent development agreement and master plan dated October of 2009. Per OCGA 3636-113, county's objection to an annexation is valid if the proposed annexation would create a substantial or significant change in zoning land use, increase in density, or an increase in infrastructure demands. It is planning and zoning's opinion, staff opinion, that the annexation request would not create any significant change in that surrounding land use, future land use map designation, or infrastructure demands for the properties. With that being said, staff would not have cause for objection. However, we would encourage the City of Hampton to consider these zoning conditions placed upon the subject property as per the August 18, 2009 zoning approval of RZ0904, in their evaluation of the annexation request. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions on the board?
I do have a couple of questions. That plan development was approved 16 years ago.
What concerns me about any development that's been sitting in, sitting in your office that hadn't been permitted, is a lot of changes in this county has been made for the last 16 years. So I think we've had discussions about sunsetting rezonings if no permits are pulled within 24 months, 36 months, reverse back to original zoning. So that being said, looking at this package, there's like, I think, 36 conditions, is that correct?
Yes, I do believe so, yes.
So all the modifications, if they choose to go use that route, would go through the City of Hampton and not Henry County, correct?
That is correct, if annexed.
So them are my concerns. I'll, I'll yield the floor to District 5 Commissioner, and I'm pretty sure he's.
Yeah, I don't have any objections to the annexation. There's, like, as you stated, and as they have stated, there's no discernible change to the land use for the property. So the only thing that I will add is, if it does go over to the City of Hampton as a part of our infrastructure improvements for District 5, we are going to improve Fears Drive right there, so that we'll actually border this property, but that is something that we already stated that we would do. So as long as it benefits the citizens of that area, I don't see any issue with it.
Any other comments or questions?
I just, you may not have the answer, but I've always asked this question, I wondered if there is no request of zoning changes. I'm just always baffled or wonder why the annexation, and we probably won't know the answer to that, but it always is in the front of my mind.
Yeah, I unfortunately don't have an answer to that question, but state legislation, with annexation law, in the event no change is requested, and in the event it does be annexed into the city property, they would not be able to change the zoning of the property within a year. And so, they would need to wait a year before moving forward with any potential changes. And, and hopefully that, that maybe address some of your concerns to regarding modifications.
So wait 12 months, or the 13th month, they can change zoning?
They could, but state legislation would allow, would allow for that.
So I guess we, we did object, that they had the same time period?
I'm sorry, could you do that?
If we objected to this, they would have the same, if it, if it met criteria to object, they still could sit on it for 12 months? And then it would automatically be annexed then, is that how that works?
If we pose, object to the request, it'll go into arbitration, and that, you know, can take some, some months.
And without valid object, reasons to object, it will be approved.
Right.
But there's no grounds for objection, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so I just need a motion to either approve or deny the annexation.
And Chair, more specifically, that would be either to object or no objection to the request.
Yeah, we got to vote either yes or no. Correct? Is that correct? We have to either object or?
County Attorney.
We need to take action on this today.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, members of the area. You only have, if you're going to.
Not going to object, you don't have to have it on the record, but if you would like to vote to object, not object, you can have it, it's up to the score, you don't have to.
So we don't have to, we don't have to take a vote to object? So then it's just automatically moves forward?
With no objection.
Okay, with no objections, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the data center ordinance. This is. This is for discussion only. Madam Vice Chair, I need for you to take lead on this for a minute because I need to step out.
Good morning, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners and Pillars of the Henry County Community. Today, I'll be walking you through our department's ongoing work around data centers, what we've learned, how we're trying to approach the issue, and where we see this fitting into the larger ULDC rewrite effort. In front of you are memorandum and a draft ordinance prepared by the planning and zoning department for your review, and I'll walk through both documents during this presentation with the understanding that the board may need additional time to review and share feedback as we ramp up to the ULDC rewrite adoption. Data centers have become one of the most complex and fast-changing topics in local planning. Data centers operate differently than traditional industrial projects, both in scale and in how they impact infrastructure, energy use, water demand, and community character. Our job is to get ahead of it, ensuring that if and when these projects come to Henry County, we're prepared to manage them responsibly. And the ordinance and memo before you represent a framework and one that balances economic potential with environmental responsibility while keeping flexibility at its core. Across the country, we've seen two very different outcomes when it comes to data centers. In some areas, they've become economic drivers, generating consistent tax revenue and job opportunities. In others, they've strained infrastructure and created land use conflicts because local codes weren't built to handle them. We don't want to fall in that second category. Data centers aren't a set it and forget it land use, and they consume significant energy, can generate continuous noise from cooling and backup systems, and may require massive water resources depending on their design. But they also represent the future of digital infrastructure. By establishing a measured flexible approach, Henry County can protect itself from unintended impacts while setting the bar for responsible, sustainable development. Planning and zoning is currently working with Cooper Carey, our Airport District Master Plan Consultants, and TSW, our ULDC rewrite consultants, to make sure that the county is developing policy that's both practical and forward-moving. We've been meeting with Hannah Spates, Cooper Carey Sustainability Lead, and their data center experts, along with Allison Bickers, who you heard from earlier today, to better understand how sustainability and site design intersect in this industry. Their team is helping us review the draft ordinance that's on your desk right now and language and identify baseline sustainability standards for our new code, standards that should appear in the ULDC and in future development agreements. The goal is simply to learn from what other jurisdictions have done, good or bad, and position Henry County as a model for sustainable, efficient data center development. So our approach is pretty simple. We're going to have a system that combines the conditional use approval by the Board of Commissioners and a mandatory data development agreement for every data center project. We're recommending keeping the zoning ordinance itself focused on things that don't change, such as core planning principles like setbacks, buffers, architecture, and compatibility. Then we use the development agreement to capture all the evolving technical details, such as cooling methods, energy efficiency standards, monitoring programs, and community benefits. Mixing land use regulation with technical standards is risky because they operate on completely different timelines. Land use controls things like setbacks and buffers and are meant to be stable and predictable over decades, while technical standards, on the other hand, evolve rapidly with industry innovation. And if we hard code technical standards into the ULDC, the ordinance will become outdated as soon as the technology shifts and updates. By separating them, we keep the code consistent with, while using development agreements to manage flexible site-specific details like cooling systems, energy metrics, and backup power requirements. That's how we protect the county's authority and its adaptability. This method allows the county to stay nimble as technology shifts while maintaining full oversight of the project. So here's what the proposed ordinance includes at glance right now as a draft. Data centers will only be allowed with a conditional use in M1 and M2 zoning districts, and that conditional use will elevate all the way to the Board of Commissioners. The setbacks will be at least 200 feet from public right-of-way and 500 feet from all residential property lines, which is also adjustable as we continue to work through the draft. Buffers that are required is a 200-foot undisturbed enhanced landscape buffer with berms, canopy, and understory trees, and evergreen screening to achieve year-round capacity. The architecture, materials, and building orientation must minimize visual impact while details to be finalized by staff and the board during the review process. There's also environmental performance metrics, such as strict noise limits at 5.5 dB A during the day and 45 dB A at night, no open evaporative cooling systems, a required environmental impact summary or operations management plan to outline water use, energy consumption, and backup power protocols, and proof of early coordination with the local power company and Henry County Water Authority to ensure capacity and infrastructure alignment. These are common sense safeguards that protect residents, infrastructure, and county resources while keeping the door open for innovation. So every approved data center must have a development agreement that will likely run concurrent with the rezoning and the conditional use process. And that's a negotiated contract between the county and the developer. This agreement will cover these items, but could also cover more, such as noise and vibration monitoring, energy reporting metrics, cooling and water system types, decommissioning and site restoration requirements, emergency coordination and response planning, workforce training or infrastructure contributions, and utility coordination and verification. Essentially, it lets us fine tune the expectations for each project on a case-by-case basis based on specific design and location, rather than trying to cram every possible requirement into the ordinance itself, which would basically make it defunct. This structure gives us accountability and adaptability, and that's two things that rarely coexist in zoning. Our next steps are focused on refinement and research. We'll continue to work with Cooper Carey and TSW to refine the ordinance language and collect real-world case studies. We want to know what worked in other places and what didn't, what type of setbacks and buffer treatments actually make a difference and makes sense, how utilities prepare for large-scale energy users, and what sustainability practices are proving effective. We're also in regular contact with the Water Authority and Georgia Power to better understand what system upgrades or long-term considerations might be needed if data centers start entering this market. At this stage, I want to ask that you please disregard any previous ordinance drafts that may have circulated. This is a fluid process. We've been intentionally involving, evolving the language with every conversation, every piece of research, and every meeting with our consultants and other departments. We're nearing a framework that we believe will actually work, a balanced approach that gives the county authority without boxing us in. Staff is asking for continued time through the ULDC rewrite to make sure that we finalize this the right way with input from our partners, our utilities, and his board, and to make sure that a code this intense actually works within the confines of the ULDC as a whole. So data centers are not going away anytime soon. The infrastructure behind, they're the infrastructure behind everything we do online, but how we plan for them will determine whether they become an asset or a burden for our community. Henry County has the opportunity to be proactive, thoughtful, and strategic, to be a regional leader in sustainable, efficient, and community-conscious data center development. By taking the time to do this right, we can ensure these facilities fit within the county's long-term vision, supporting our economy, protecting our neighborhoods, and preserving our quality of life. So I know that was a mouthful, but basically what the approach we're trying to take is to require them to only be in M1 and M2, which will likely be I1 and I2 industrial once we change the ULDC. There'll be a conversion table for that. Requiring them to do a conditional use, which requires them to come to the, in front of the board, whether it's already zoned or not, and then also requiring with a development agreement for those more technical pieces of the code. Because frankly, data centers have been changing almost daily and yearly, and we want to be on the cutting edge every time we get a new request. So just as a point of clarity, we don't like to really put anything technical in our zoning code because it's a land use document. And once you start adding a lot of technical information to it, it, it basically makes the code null and void, which is kind of what we're dealing with now with the 2009 code. So without any more speaking on my behalf, I'm happy to take any questions.
So Madam Clerk, this is a discussion, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So District 1, do you have any?
I don't have any questions. I'm just looking forward for the final darkness.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely, I don't have anything, Commissioner.
I just comment for those that are listening. I think it's important, even to those that oppose data centers or support, that we have in place an ordinance that already has constraints in place. Our board is very fortunate where we have worked extremely well together on these items. We may not have the blessing or the gracious for that for a number of years to continue. I hope it does. But we can go ahead, as a board that does get along, go ahead and put those parameters in place so that if approached by a data center, there are expectations that are set on the front end and we're not scrambling on the back end. So I want to tell staff, thank you all for being very diligent also in working to compile this information. Thank you.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yeah, first of all, just thank you for taking the time. I remember it was actually exactly a year ago that I asked for us to slow down the process because a year ago, we had two data center proposals that were supposed to come before the Board of Commissioners. And when I asked that we come up with a data center ordinance, I want to thank staff for actually pushing back because the original request was that you all come up with an ordinance by January of 2025. Staff pushed back and said that wasn't enough time to evaluate everything that was going on with data centers, and I appreciate that. I truly appreciate that because here we are a year later, and we're still trying to make sure that we come up with the correct language. And I think that is, that is a testament to us making sure that we do right by our community and our citizens by making sure that we have the correct language. With that being said, I know that you had a note to say disregard in the previous draft versions, but I, but I did have a concern, comment and concern. I'm looking at the site standards, and I know that the original draft that you sent us a couple of weeks ago, it had a setback from any residential property line at 750 feet. In response to that draft, I, I asked that we move to a setback from any residential property line be 1,000 feet. And my concern is that I see this draft that you have before us today, and it says that setback from any residential property line is 500 feet. And so I, I have a very legitimate concern as to why it has gone to 500 feet when the original that you sent us a couple of weeks ago was 750 feet, and I asked for 1,000 feet. So no need to answer right now, but we need to make sure that we, we have discussion about that. Also, the minimum site area being a 20 contiguous acres, I think that's rather small. So that's another, another item I think that we need to review. I do like the fact that every single proposed data center have their own development agreement. I think that gives us the ability, it provides flexibility, but it also gives us the ability to make sure that we do stay abreast of any changes and, you know, in the continuing landscape of data centers, and that we're able to adapt to make sure that we, we have protections in place. My last comment. I actually have two comments. One of is I like the fact that you did the conditional use and the master development agreement process because that negates a problem that a lot of communities have had, which is to be able to develop data centers by right. And that has crushed some communities, especially some of our neighbors in the metro Atlanta area by being able to allow data centers to develop by right. So this will negate that, and that is, that is a great protection for our community. So I appreciate that. And I'm, I'm looking at the last piece and I'll, I'll let my colleagues speak, but the connectivity in open space. So I'm looking at, it says preserve a minimum of 30% open space, including buffers and stormwater features. So I just, that's just another point I think we need to have discussion around as we develop the final language for the draft. Thank you.
I'd like to say thank you again for the work that you all have been doing, and I'm grateful and glad that we are getting ahead of this so we won't end up like other communities. It will be a tremendous financial blessing for us, which in turn hopefully will help our, our tax base here in the county to help hopefully relieve some of the tax burden on our citizens. And I'm appreciative of the conversation we had with other data center communities to share with us what they did wrong so that we can avoid those mistakes and we can get it again right on the front end. So again, thank you for all the work that you all have done and put into this.
Thank you. And I just want to just end with just saying that, you know, we went through different meetings with other communities. So thank you for doing this, and my only concern is making sure it's not by resident. That's the biggest thing for me. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. As you review the doc, I know you're going to take a little time to actually go through it. Please send all comments directly to me via email. We, we really want, you know, we, we start small and go up. So I definitely think that those buffers should be a little further as well, just based off of what I've learned over the year. But we'll get there. And it'll be ready once the ULDC goes live. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Stephanie, do we have anything else that was brought on? Okay, thank you. So I guess we'll move to the county manager's comments.
Good morning again, Vice Chair and members of the board. This is your county manager comments for Tuesday, November 4. I wanted to thank everyone for coming out and participating in our annual trunk-or-treat event at Echo Park Speedway. It was a huge success, and our team had a blast seeing everyone in their costumes. On this Monday, November 10, District 5 Commissioner Kevin Lewis has an upcoming town hall meeting. It will be at North Mount Carmel Recreation Center. The discussion topics include the Airport District Master Plan, the Development Authority representatives, the Water Authority, and representatives from Georgia Power. And then finally, as a reminder, for those that are interested in participating in a 5K or 10K, the Henry County Parks and Recreation Department, in partnership with Academy Sports, will host its annual Turkey Trot 5K and 10K Run or Walk on Thanksgiving Day. You can go online and register now. And as a reminder, the proceeds go to the Henry County Special Olympics, and the event is sponsored by Divergent, which is detailing, ceramic coating, paint, and protection film. Madam Vice Chair, this ends my comments.
Thank you, thank you. Do we have any public comments, if anyone's signing up? I guess we need to approve the minutes for October the 7th, regular BOC meeting. So can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
Move to approve.
All in favor? Okay, do we have executive session, county manager? Okay, so we get?
Yes, ma'am. I believe that only, well, two, by his personnel and real estate.
Okay.
And litigation, my apologies.
Okay, so we will?
I move, I move to go into the executive session. Second?
Get a chance to say it, okay?
I'm sorry.
Got it, Stephanie?
Madam Clerk, we're going to, if I can get a motion to reconvene from our executive session.
Motion.
Can I get a second? Okay, any discussion, not all in favor? Okay, we're going to do an approval of an affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor or discussion? Okay, got the vote, all right. All right, anything else, Madam Clerk?
No, ma'am.
Okay. We have our upcoming meetings and events on November 4th, 2025. 6:00 PM is a called BOC meeting regarding planning and zoning items. So that will be this evening. And we've canceled, the chair has canceled, the November 18th meeting, which is our regular BOC meeting at 6:30 for November 18th is canceled. And then we will come back on December 2nd at 9:00 AM for our regular BOC meeting. If there's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.